Good evening, everyone. The Lupier Community Board of Education meeting is now called to order. I just wanted to mention Ms. Hofer is driving from the airport, so she is going to be late this evening and will be joining us at the table when she arrives. Just so everyone is aware. We will then go ahead and begin with the pledge of allegiance. I'll turn it over to you Superintendent Wondry.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my pleasure to introduce our TRL elementary principal, Ms. Kelly Van Gogh, who is going to introduce students who are with us this evening to share the pledge.
They're not just students, they're staff member students. So if you know about staff member students, they get condoms during the
Yes, they do.
So I'd like to introduce Keegan Bederka, Colson Carney, Evan Whitinger, and Emma Whitinger, and they're going to come lead us in.
Awesome.
Awesome.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
We appreciate it. Okay, we will go into our presenting school. Superintendent Wondry.
Yes, it's to reintroduce Kelly Van Gogh. It's been so long since last we heard her.
I know.
Present on benchmark three, 1A. So let's get a slideshow going here.
So first of all, thank you for having Pearl. We're so excited to be here. I love presenting before the schoolwork. I've done it several times. So thank you for supporting Pearl and thank you for supporting our community. It's a great day to be here tonight. And thank you to our staff members, children, and other staff members. We are going to be presenting how we're becoming better together at TRL. And we're becoming better together through the way that we collaborated with one another through adaptive school structure. You know how I always have technological issues with some of you? Some of you don't. I'm not touching it. Every year something happens.
You brought the oxtails.
I do.
I don't know about that. But my name is Amber Whitinger and I'm already part of TRL. And I'm really good and I'm very good as well.
So I mentioned better together. You probably don't know where that motto came from. And we actually talked about it on our Facebook page. We had some parents, one or two parents, this motto from. So better together came about from us thinking about how post-COVID, it was just so good to be better together. We were back together again. We were so much, we were so isolated when we were in our houses. And we were stuck there with COVID. So your motto really came from that. And it's something that kids can easily understand. We can explain to them and they can explain to us, how are we better together? So better together goes along with what we're talking about tonight with schoolwork culture. I'll give you a moment. So basically, we're going to be talking about how we are becoming better together through collaborative practice.
So one of the reasons that we're really focusing on about collaborative work and how we're working together is we're able to take part in some training, adaptive school training. Kelly was able to take part in that last year. And then Liz and I were able to take part in adaptive school training this fall. And it truly inspired us in how bringing different strategies into our building to build collaboration and grow as a collective unit. And so throughout our presentation tonight, you're going to see strategies embedded throughout that we've been able to take on and are living and breathing in the work that we're doing in the building. One of them is a visual agenda. So our outcome today was stated outcomes. So we want you to be able to build some understanding about adaptive schools. We want to show you how TRL is becoming an adaptive school and some of the steps that we're taking and impact we're having on student learning. So like I said at the start of the year, this was a big inspiration for us. And we've been working throughout the year, bringing in opportunities for our staff to develop collectively as a unit. And that's down with a really big focus on building relationships, trust, and having intentional purpose in what we're doing every day with students, staff, parents, our community. With the end goal that we're building our capacity is so in order to do that, we have really three main focus areas to incorporate adaptive schools into our professional learning community with the goal of increasing student achievement. So our focus areas are facilitating groups. How are we paying attention to the types of groups and the processes and relationships that we're building with one another? Developing groups and having shared responsibility across groups. And then thinking also about how are we becoming individual skillful members that all have a common focus and really truly intentional purpose on using momentum and focus on student achievement?
Yeah, and so intentional purpose is something that we have in our, the back of our minds all the time. And our trainer said this quote that totally stuck with us and I found it on a sticky note today. So I'll read it, so I don't want to miss it up. But tiny shifts create major changes with profound implications. So even though our training was four days long, there are so many strategies we walked away with, we're just trying to be intentional in getting better at a couple of them that you'll see throughout. And the important ones that we're trying to do more often are inclusion strategies at the beginning of any meeting. We show visual agendas, which you'll see over there. And then we determine meeting norms and outcomes. So an inclusion strategy is something that you can do at the beginning of a gathering, of a meeting. And we've tried a few of them. Like me is one of them that we've tried a few times. And we'd like you to participate in it with us so that you can get a feel for how we start our meetings. So I'm going to say a category and you'll have to stand up. If you fit into that category, look around, see who's in your group, and then you'll sit back down. And I'll do a review of that. Don't worry. Oh, no, what are you talking about? Okay, follow the first one. I live in Lupier. I was or am a Lupier Community School student or employee. Next one, I went on a vacation this past year. And next one, I have lived in another state. Okay, what was the third one? I am Spartan.
Go white.
Okay, what about the other one? The blue? Oh, blue. And that's a what? Sixty seconds. And so we start our staff meetings, a couple of our PLCs that way. It's a chance for us to know more about each other so we can build community, build relationships, and then have more successful meetings because of that.
So school-wide improvements in student learning happens in schools with a collaborative culture. And throughout here, we've really built lots of opportunities every time we get to try and build strategies and put things in place to grow in a collaborative way. Lots of discussion and really the idea that we own this, what's our why? What's the purpose? Why are we doing what we're doing? If what we're doing is not working, why? What are we going to do about it every night? And so that idea that we don't learn from experience, we learn from what we do with that experience. And so that's really been what we've been able to take on. It's kind of like our motto. It's in a lot of smores that Kelly's been putting out throughout the year just to focus within our staff. What's our why? What are we going to do about what we want to do?
My other takeaway from adaptive schools was the seven norms of collaborative work. And so we're not going to master all of these this year, but we're trying to be intentional about pausing when we're in a meeting or I might paraphrase or pose a question to a teacher in order to facilitate some thinking. And the more time in practice we develop these groups, I feel like our groups will be able to achieve better outcomes.
So here's another example of the structure that we did. Up on the screen, you can see there is a structure called here's what, so what, now what. And it's specifically a data structure. So as a new principal, I had no idea what the annual education report was. It's called AER. And it measures fall to winter, student, whether they meet their anticipated growth goal. And this data is actually presented to the public. And I didn't know that. And I've been here for 23 years. So as a principal, I was thinking, oh my gosh, I didn't know that. And I started to think I've got my teachers don't know this either. So what I did is I put the data that's in narrative form, I put it into a chart. And so in a staff meeting, we presented the data. And you can see that it goes from 1920 all the way up to the columns that don't have data, which is this year. To put it into a realistic form for teachers, I wanted them to know, here's where the kids learn in their kindergarten. Here's where they learn first grade. So you can see that if the kid is green in kindergarten, then first grade, it has their data and it keeps going down. So the teachers could look at homework data. So I gave them a little bit of a caveat to this. See, we're at, it has headings like three, 10, 20 COVID remote spring. I didn't give that to them. I just gave them the dates and the data. So I gave them the data, which is the here's what. I wanted them to look at the data and really sort of digest it. And then the so what is, okay, I want to know anything about that data. And so they get to do some time thinking on their own. And then they talked with their teammates. And their teammates were not their grade level partners. They were, you know, blood teachers. They were cross-grade level teachers that were with them at the table. And I still didn't have the headings up there. So people had forgotten when COVID started, was the first thing. And so they're looking at the data and they're trying to think about, when did this happen? What was the cause of this data? And so they were able to share with each other and then they shared out. Then I put the headings up and they had another discussion about that. Oh, I remember when we were remote starting. Some people forgot about that year. We didn't start until the end of September, in lockdown. And so to look at it in that lens, well, our data wasn't too bad during that second year after COVID. And people are like, I was wrong. There was a sense of urgency. When we started a month late, people are like, oh, you're going to be disappointed after grade. They were really having this sense of urgency. So then they got to do the now what column. So if you know this now, now what are you going to do about it? And the time that we did this particular structure was in the beginning of December. So they hadn't done their winter testing yet. So they still had the chance to finish that last column and really make an impact on their students. So now you know what the data was in the previous years. Now what are you going to do about it now? And so that allowed them to set up different testing sessions with kids. They started to think about their kids a little bit differently. And they had from December until February to work with their kids intentionally, to work with their grade level counterparts, to share kids, to really work during PLCs and dive into data and what they could do with intervention. So on the next slide, we fast forward. Now, this is some data that we presented in February to the teachers after we did all of the winter assessments. And so again, you always want to focus on them in a way that's easily digestible. So just so you know, green is good. It was better. And then red, not so hot. Right? So the way that we present this is it is nice for us to look across where kids maybe are either green all the way through. Those are kids that we want to accelerate and challenge. Kids that are red all the way through, we know that we've had a problem and need to do more intervention. But then you can also look at it where we've got kids that are red all the way through on their computerized testing, but then they're fine when they're working with a human. And they might be green. And that's okay. Because that tells us that maybe they need a different combination while they're working on computers. Maybe they don't have that stamina and that perseverance to do something independently. So we look at data a little differently when we look at it this way. When we looked at this data, we were in PLCs and we had something called Data Day. Data Day is where we actually look at kids and develop their IRIPs. We develop their moving forward intervention plans. And so we would get special education teachers together. We would get agenda teachers together. And then cross-grade, if we've had some kids who had to accelerate, maybe they needed to go work with a teacher who was at the next higher grade level. And conversely, maybe we needed to have somebody work with a teacher who was really specializing in upper grade. So that's just another way of how we're collaborating with teachers, how they're collaborating with each other to solve their problems. So based on this, though, we really started to think about, this is one class, by the way. So every teacher had this in front of them. When we looked at all of the classes, it allowed us to think about, okay, so we're seeing these ups and downs of data. Maybe we need to do something different with their run instruction. And so what we're going to talk about next is based on the data, how we develop our professional development. One of the things that we worked on with our professional development is we started talking about talk moves in math because we, we know that we're not doing as well in math, is what we were taught. And so talk moves specifically in math and across all content areas is important for us. So we're going to show you some professional development in math. We also know that in PLCs, we have a new curriculum that we utilize in some amount. And so things that are new, we really want to dive in together with our colleagues.
And so one of the essential practices that we've been focusing on is reallowed. And that went very well with the new ELDU correspondence and the now that we've been using this year. So the PD that we've been providing to staff this year has been about building their capacity as teachers who get reallowed to help support their students through it. And it's been interesting because we're able to practice the skills and strategies that we've been using in adaptive schools with the teachers. And then we believe you're doing so, they have more engaged and they have more student-centered conversations in their own classes. So like the PD, like the goal, like sit and get is, you know, isn't it fast, right? If you sit and listen to something for an hour and then it sits on a shelf. For our, our staff is developing and they're collaborating together in small groups and then they're doing it with their own class. So it's pretty neat because when you have talk moves and you have valuable participation, you'll have better student outcomes. So that was our goal.
This kind of just wraps up kind of our journey through here. Any idea that we become more ready to be adaptive and in doing so, we've realized that the change is needed, business space to where we are right now. And there's one element in the future. And throughout the year, this journey, that collective space, it's centered around a program of teaching and learning. And we embody the idea that we are better together. One last kind of active strategy. You've probably heard of exit tickets before. It's an idea that you're going to be able to reflect on learning in classroom. Students will be able to complete an exit ticket and show their understanding of the concept. We do exit tickets in the same way with adaptive schools. It's an opportunity to process thinking and their next steps. We've done them in our PLCs. To wrap up PD, don't have to write anything down. This is really just an opportunity to think and reflect. And it's called walk out with. So what is your wow? What are you going to walk out with based on today's presentation? What do you know now about adaptive schools and our implementation of that at TRL?
So again, we really want to thank you for the opportunity to present. Interesting, you don't know it, but the reason why we do the thinking and the talking is that adults can only learn for about 10 minutes before they need to read about it independently or they need to talk about it. So we were timing it. So that's why we gave you that think time again. It was an adaptive schools sort of thing that we do. Also allowing you to like look at slides and how we start talking or pausing before we move on into different things. But I'm curious, some really good examples of how the community has embraced us. Leader Fines has been amazing. Your optimism has been amazing. We're so blessed at TRL. What questions might we have for us?
Any comments, questions?
I don't know if they have any questions, but I mean, you guys talked to the effect of like a team approach. And that's society, that's everyone moving forward. I mean, look at CPR. CPR has gone from an angry little thing to a team approach. I mean, everything about my work environment is all a team approach. So you guys hit it right on the head if you ask me. So maybe.
I appreciate the passion. So can you show your own channel?
Every time, every time.
Ran a lot these days.
And I really like how even just in that classroom, you can see that each kid's on a different model and that you're going to come in and then, so each child, so one kid isn't just sitting bored. No one is feeling overwhelmed, you know, in another position. So I really, I really like that.
I like, I seem to always have a takeaway myself that I look at using in my office that we can use to adapt to our employees. You know, with your stuff, like even the stand-up and, you know, little, you know, thing you did there. I was like, that's great. Because we do, you know, it's, we're getting new employees, whatever, but you don't get a chance to know everyone, you know? There's less time for that. So being able to do little things like that and pick up little tidbits about people on the way, just kind of break the ice a little bit more, that's great. Thanks.
I love Liz's comment, sit and get. I wrote that down just because that's always been in education, right? It's like feed me, feed me. And I have that as a college professor. And one of my things that I hate is to use all this PD. And then like I said, I feel like you put the book on the shelf, right? You never go back to it. So I say that outside so all the time. You can't just put it on the shelf and not go back to it and review it every so often or it's not, it's not going to work. So you also reaffirmed my teachings, so I appreciate that because I use the money as point a lot in my classes. Like right when students walk out, what's your money for? And I make them write it down. And then I adapt my lessons the next time to what their money is pointless. So you reaffirmed me, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think it's just, the thing I really liked is the techniques that you're describing that you've learned in this adaptive school training. The interesting piece that I've noticed is like the activity had us do with me. How many industries are using that? Because most of the time we're on Zoom or some sort of electronic meeting and they're doing that at the beginning. And it really does help form a, I don't know, all of a sudden bond for everybody to be more collaborative and get those think tanks straight. And so I really, really enjoy that you guys are doing that activity. Because everything you're doing for the kids is great, but you guys need to come along too and do things to strengthen, strengthen your game itself. Love it. Okay. We will head into our public comments. A board meeting is a meeting of school district business held in public. It is not a public meeting. The board is not going to respond to those making public comments, but will direct the superintendent to call for the group center. Thirty minutes to set aside the public comments so the presenters being asked to keep their comments brief. The board does not comment in public on any student or employee and asks the presenters to be respectful of any person they comment above. Kristi Braxton?
I don't remember where to spooch.
You could, anyone could like. Right, that's perfect.
Right, I work at the media center at Old Warner. I have to take my glasses off to read, so. I am the new vice president with the LESP. And we are here to honor five employees. We're a little behind in this because we haven't been able to present. So I'm going to go ahead and say the employees that we're honoring and the months that they were in and a little bit about each one. Sonia Johnson was October. She's a vital forward mentor, era, a team player. Her coworkers find that she's always going to help teach the kids, help with anybody that needs it and is, always stands up. November is Crystal Wilson. Crystal stands up on the rest because wherever they're short, she doesn't even have to be asked. She just steps right up. She always has a smile and always has encouraging words for students and staff. She names every day on average. December is Candice Berry. She is flexible and willing to adjust her schedule when the need arises. She's always at work with a smile on her face and is very good to her students. The only member that we have here tonight is our Tammy Creason. So I'm super happy that she can make that. Tammy does a great job in human resources. She's our January Employee of the Month. She goes out of her way to make sure that you are taken care of. She's gracious and to everyone, I know that to be true. I'm sort of a little behind on some of the things I have to do.
That's her really good Tammy impression.
She's very flexible and willing to adjust her schedule when the need arises. In February is Sheena Raymond. She goes above and beyond to help all of those when supporting the students and staff in our building. She's a true leader and can always be relied on to ask for help or when to ask for help. So we do have certificates that we're going to pass out. I thank you for the time to recognize these and we're going to try to keep, keep ahead of that now.
That's awesome. You have, a kid is snuck in the back.
I was in the back.
Congratulations to everyone. I've missed it, so I'm still glad you're doing it and had comments shared with us. So thank you. I think that is all of our public comments for this evening. So let's head into reports. We will start with the policy committee. So Dr. Novak, would you please share the committee report?
So we met at the 4:00 set station, 2:00 o'clock. Myself, Amy Hofer, and Kai Watson, who are the committee members. Others attending, including Matt Wondry, conceivably Michelle Bradford, Mark Rayor, Erica Henderson, and Mary Moss. So the meeting was called to order at 2:00 PM via Zoom. And we discussed the administrative guideline, AG 6423, use of credit and debit purchasing cards. Conceivably, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources explained to the committee that AG 6423 was developed to align with terminology listed within Board Policy 6423 and current practices. In addition, procedural documents have In addition, procedural documents have been added in order to compile all the details in one document. Myself, Board Secretary, requested that the Policy Committee were to develop administrative guidelines for each board policy. The committee agreed to further discuss the terminology within this guideline and add to the next Policy Committee meeting agenda. And then we discussed Administrative Guidelines, 530, Drug Prevention. It is being recommended that the detail of the Drug Prevention Program from Policy 5350 on Student Welfare be removed and create a new AG 5530 Drug Prevention that does not exist today. And then Policy 5350, Student Welfare. Board Policy 5350 provides guidance for promoting activities to ensure a school environment where young people are safe and secure and where social and emotional needs are recognized and responded to. Changes are being recommended to this policy in order to eliminate duplicate information from multiple policies. It was the consensus of the committee to recommend approval of this policy. And it is on the board agenda for this evening for full board consideration. Our meeting adjourned at 2:41 PM.
Okay, any questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Dr. Novak. Next, we will do Teaching, Learning, and Technology. Mrs. LaBarre, would you please share the committee report with us?
Yes, we met on February 20th, 2023 at 3:05 PM. Committee members present April LaBarre, Jamie Hofer, and Tim Lutka. Others attending, Matt Wondry, Michelle Bradford, and Mary Moss. Meeting was called to order at 3:05 via Zoom. The committee discussed the Middle School Social Studies Pilot. Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, Michelle Bradford, explained that as per Board Policy and Guidelines, there are two new social studies textbooks that we are piloting for sixth through eighth grades. Textbook one is National Geographic, Sixth Through Eight by Sendgauge Learning. And textbook two is Exploring Geography and Global Issues, Sixth Grade, World History Voices and Perspectives, Seventh Grade, and United States History Voices and Perspectives, Eighth Grade by McGraw-Hill. A textbook study form has been established and completed for the stakeholders to rate attributes of each book, including physical format, diction and style, adaptability, content, utility, and authorship. They are recommending that the district adopt textbook two, Exploring Geography and Global Issues, World History Voices and Perspectives, and United States History Voices and Perspectives, with a six-year quote of $85,623.19 for 100 books per grade level and all students having online subscription, teacher professional development, teacher resources, and shipping. Michelle will present the study to the full board at the March 1st, 2023 Board Meeting. High School Math Pilot. Michelle Bradford explained that there are two new high school math for Algebra I, II, Geometry, and Precal books that we are piloting. Textbook one is Big Ideas and textbook two is Into Math, AGA. A textbook study form has been established and completed for the stakeholders to rate attributes of each book. They are recommending that the district adopt textbook one, Big Ideas, with a six-year quote of $150,907.35 with a book and online subscription for every student, teacher professional development, teacher resources, and shipping. Michelle will present the study to the full board at the March 1st, 2023 Board Meeting. Section 98B Goal Progress Report. Public Act 48, Section 98B requires districts to choose a benchmark assessment or assessments that are aligned to state standards and are administered to determine whether students are making meaningful progress towards mastery of these standards. Districts are required to present the results from the benchmark assessments administered under Section 104A to local boards. Michelle Bradford shared that LaPierre Community Schools has chosen the NWEA Measures of Economic Growth Progress Growth for their benchmark assessment. This assessment is administered three times each year. She reviewed the student scores for the assessments that were given this spring. In order to continue to improve scores, next steps will include the continuation of data analysis days at all grade levels, interventions continuing to be implemented in K through five classrooms, as well as intervention classes at the secondary level, guided academics, tutoring opportunities at the secondary level, professional development, and added interventionists to several buildings. Field Trip Request. The committee reviewed the following overnight slash out of state field trip. LHS Key Club to Bay City, Michigan on March 17th to 19th. The committee is recommending this trip reapproved by the full board at the March 1st, 2023 Board Meeting. Meeting adjourned at 3:27 PM.
Any comments or questions?
She just did the presentation now.
Just getting great, Michelle.
Just stand up and say, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. LaBarre. We will do Finance and Operations Committee. Dr. Watson, would you share the report, please?
February 24th, we met at 2:00 PM via Zoom. Myself, Lisa Novak, Summer Putnam. Others were Matt Wondry, Mark Rader, Kim Sukerly, Erica Henderson, Carrie Blanchett from PFM, and Mary Moss. We discussed the Bond Sales Resolution. Mark Rader introduced Carrie Blanchett from PFM to review bond sales. Carrie discussed the issuance of the full amount of $44,840,000 from the bond election. This resolution will be placed on tonight's agenda for full board consideration. Bargaining Update. Kim Sukerly updated the committee on the five open contracts within our bargaining units. The custodians, absentee, LEA teachers, LTA bus drivers, SEIU mechanics, and LSDAA building admins. These contracts will all expire this June 30th. Maple Grove appraisal. The district has been working to obtain appraisals on the Maple Grove Building since community mental health has shown interest in possibly purchasing the property. Mark will update the committee and board via a weekender once the numbers become available. Vaults in Buildings. Per liberty talks have taken place regarding installing security vaults in the school resource officers' offices at district buildings, including LaPierre High School, Zimmer, and Royal Mormon. Mark and Mac recommend installing these vaults that withhold safety items, including long armed guns, to be used in an emergency situation. As requested by the committee, additional information will be gathered and shared once it becomes available. GCE Energy Projects. The district has been discussing with guaranteed clean energy, what potential grants or rebate funding exists to help further complement energy work in the district beyond bond dollars. GCE will work with the district to look for possible projects to save money in part by submitting grants and rebates on our behalf. And our meeting adjourned at 3:18.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. We will do the last committee report, which is the personal. Mrs. McCallum, would you please share your report?
We met February 24th via Zoom at 3:20. It was myself, April LaBarre, and Summer Putnam. Also attending, Matt Wondry, Kim Sukerly, Mark Rader, Erica Henderson, and Mary Moss. Kim Sukerly updated the committee on the five opening contracts within our bargaining units, the custodians, teachers, bus drivers, mechanics, and building administrators. These contracts will all expire on June 30th, 2023. And we adjourned at 3:35.
Any questions? Thank you, Mrs. McCallum. Okay. So that concludes our report section of our devin today. We will head into presentations. I'll turn it over to you, Superintendent Wondry.
Hey, President.
Three major discussions.
Three major discussions, yeah. We're going to begin with Mrs. Bradford to talk about our middle school social studies pilot and our high school math pilot.
Yes, one of my favorite things. I love this part of the job. I get to work with the teachers. We have some rocks here today. Cody Medalla and Andy Edwards who teach math and Dave Sweeney who teaches social studies. So feel free to ask questions and want to come in.
Do you have this as a presentation?
What you have at the table are two textbook evaluation sheets. They really have a neat bit of work and it's part of their guideline.
What? I'm in the browser. Oh, it's in your browser.
Anyway, this supports the policy that I want to talk about. But that's really the work we do for all the length of the pilot that you have and to let you receive that sheet as well. So basically, board policy is the board education. Some of all textbooks use this part of educational program of the district. We go through a textbook evaluation. And it's all outlined in the guideline. And it's quite a process. And again, it's one of my favorite things to do. And this year, we got, we have to cut. So we have the middle school, have social studies, and high school math. And now it's going wide. Currently, our middle school social studies textbooks and the things that can shine in, they were published in 2005. Michigan, they do not align with the standards. So the papers updated, they're kind of outdated and offensive. This time has changed. They're, I mean, I've got one in my office and it's just, they're not in good condition at all. There are no digital resources and the textbook is no longer being published. For high school math, our current contract expired. The textbook is no longer being published. The digital platform isn't user-friendly because it's outdated. And the data indicates our secondary math scores need to improve. So those were really good reasons to go into two pilots. Typically, we don't do that in one year. What you have at your desk is the textbook evaluation study sheet for two, and you'll see that it looks at all those categories. And it's pretty much how we rate the pilot. Another consideration, especially for social studies and math, is the standard alignment. They each, social studies and math included with the updated standards. And math is that medical practices that have to be embedded is part of, in addition to the natural standards. And then in social studies, it's the college career and civic life framework that gets that dimensions for inquiry. And it's all about getting students to think, persevere, problem solve, investigate. So we have to consider these components in both of these subject areas. So for state, as April mentioned, we chose two resources to pilot, National Geographic and by Sendgauge, and United States History, World History, and it's more geography by McGraw-Hill. They did one pilot for the first part of the year and then we're currently in the second pilot now, finishing. Had for Algebra I, II, Geometry, and Precalculus, we did Big Ideas by Sendgauge and AGA Into Math. But with AGA, they didn't have Precalculus. So it's just, so Precalculus was part of the pilot in Big Ideas. So I like these slides. This all, all this data came from what you have at your desk or your table. These are all those strengths. And I like to put them both up there to see clearly which one really. And that's the time that I get to stand with them. They meet periodically and we go through these and we really talk through what it is that concerns of this program compared to the strengths of the other ones. So clearly, National Geographic, the physical format is attractive, just like you can imagine with National Geographic. It's visually pleasing, colors and graphics. I've spent a lot of primary sources, including lots of photographs, interactive maps and paintings, and explains some vocabulary terms. As for the other resources, the physical format is durable, very attractive, digital learning platform. They love it, plus lots of interactive graphs, charts, multiple tables. In fact, a couple of pilot teachers just use the digital platform and apparently use the books. The illustrations provide opportunities for students to expand their thinking. That's that, the ingredient piece that we were looking for. And I have other questions. The textbook, the non-level vocabulary is easily accessible. Readability, we had a priority for lifestyle levels. You know, social studies can be difficult to read if you're not very eager. And it comes in the digital platform with different student levels. So for ELL students, really help, it's helpful. And the teacher can put the kids in groups at a different level and they can work together at that level as well. It's cross-curricular. It integrates the math, science, writing. Again, it aligns to the C three Kramer that I mentioned. Weaknesses, again, we didn't have any for the pilot during currently. With the National Geographic, we had several. So we rated each chapter, you've got the ratings. And obviously, National Geographic came out more than the other one. So, and it's really nice comparison. So these are the two price quotes. And actually, the one that we are brought to mining is the cheaper one. Mark.
First time for everything.
So that includes 300 student textbooks. We're 100 hardcover books per grade level. It's 560 student online licenses. That's really where they get shipped. Six teacher resources, PD, and new food shipping. So obviously, we are recommending it's more geography, world history, and United States history by McGraw-Hill. If you have any questions about social studies, for Dave, you can ask him now and I will look on to it.
It's a good book. The online component is really nice. Can you help me to do this at my style level for student abilities? And even for like some of our students who, we have some students of IEPs that's things have to write from, and again, grade level. They actually put headphones on, read two times. They don't have to actually be in the room, they can stay out there and get it.
That's really nice.
Yeah.
I think that's the way that college is moving too is the online component. So I think that's important to kind of push that through as well as what we find is if there's mistakes in the book, then online gets updated.
Oh, that's true.
You know what I mean? And so you're, it's always current. So you don't have the, you know, it's just a good reason.
And part of the guideline or policy is we have to have the books out here for recruiting days. So feel free to look at them off of us, well. So for math, Big Ideas obviously outweighed AGA Into Math. Again, overall physical format by your colors, but by me. That's one thing, I'll give it a reading. Text, tone, and style, organization is wisely planned. Each chapter provides Laurie out. I really like this. It launches the teacher into what the misconceptions could be with. So the teacher, before a unit is taught, Laurie is actually, she was, she's one of the authors, I believe. Or anyway, she, she worked closely with John Paddy. That's really like her. If you don't know that, I'm going to John Paddy. Anyway, so the readability for all school levels, student self-assessments within the lesson to allow students to know where they are and they're learning. That's pretty cool, something as well. And feel free to talk about, I like how it does that. Want to talk about that a little bit?
Which part?
How the students, they self-assess the lessons to allow those to know where they are and where they're going within a unit.
Yeah, each little lesson has a, like just, it's simple, but it's simple and right at the point it has a, basically, it gives a three standards and they rank themselves throughout it. And it can be turned in digitally or you can do print copies of it.
It's a good way to form a.
Where they're not, they're not doing a problem. They're saying what they think they understand and relationship it started for the day.
And that's the math practical practices correlates with other subject areas. It gives some test prep for SAT. Again, it has a digital learning platform and by adequate practice and online homework and the right student nationally. And Precalculus is available with these resources. And there isn't. AGA Into Math, the glossary provide, we have strengths for the glossary. The vice versa, which in Spanish is challenging reading. It correlates with other subjects and the questioning in smarter learning is a strength. So again, the weaknesses really out, you know? Big Ideas, we identify with any resource that we look at with Algebra II. The Big Ideas, we identify with any resource that we look at with Algebra Two. The Algebra Two, it's always difficult because when the kids come into Algebra Two, they've missed Algebra for a whole year because they have Algebra One, Geometry and Algebra Two. So with any resource, we go into Algebra Two and you almost need like a front loading chapter to get them back into the concepts of algebra. But that's the thing. Weaknesses, again, can we read them? And again, Big Ideas helps score A G A. And this book is a little bit more because it's math and it's more grade levels. But this book is a hundred fifty thousand nine hundred and seventy-five, includes a textbook for each student, including precalculus. A digital bundle, that means a digital access to the textbook. Sixteen teacher resources, six professional development kits and shipping.
Have you studied the student journal piece? What's the student journal piece?
At the bottom, that one and they add for the, you have to purchase student journals to get it. They don't have, we don't have their student journals.
Is the ebook downloadable, but can they get access to the document?
In both or in either. I know, I believe they can access both if they download them. I think they finally just sent this week, I don't know if you got the same email, just finally sent us like PDF access. To the A G A.
We've had trouble.
They wouldn't. They wouldn't admit they had a PDF.
I think Broad Hill definitely has a read anywhere app. I'm not sure what Sunpage does. Because without internet access, you know, students are going to.
With Sunpage and Big Ideas, there's live tutors, they cannot enter at certain times.
Right, but if they don't have internet, you know what I mean? You don't have internet, sign off in some of the areas, or it's really slow.
Right. So we are recommending Big Ideas.
That's cheaper too.
That's cheaper too?
Yeah, so this is four grade levels right compared to two.
Get it right out of the park today.
Right. So the other one is two.
And a student book for every student.
So you're doing more than social studies. So that's the price.
The other was three, I think, right?
Three, it's all three, six, seven, eight. And this one's Algebra One, Algebra Two, Geometry.
Okay.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, teachers, for all of the work. You guys are the ones that did it all. And I appreciate all of the time that you put into doing it because it's you. We, you know, trusting you, that's what our job is to, you know, believe in what you're doing and the fact that you guys took all this extra time to research this, to give it to us and to present it. We appreciate it, thank you.
I do think the Big Ideas will be a good transition, I think, because I was in the last pilot as well that we did. We're, yeah, I think it's a good mix of things that'll bring, yeah, better access to, yeah, skills and things that the kids need. So I do think it's.
We looked at other districts too that have adopted Big Ideas and looked at data and actually compared our district, we're the gun, you know, same side, same demographic. And they're, they're using Big Ideas and doing a lot.
Good to look forward to those.
School of course.
And a white dress.
Yeah.
You're trying.
Anything else? Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Bond.
Bond, thanks. So as Ford knows, we had originally intended to do this as a special meeting, as a separate agenda item, but had some freaky weather the other day, so we postponed it to this evening. So Mark and I will be jointly presenting this and also joining us, part of our leadership and project management team, Bart Mallow, Daryl and Julia, to take some time to come and explain to us the process. So I'll start and you guys feel free to interject at any time, but essentially what we wanted to do in phase one of the project is to roll out, yeah, you also have a pack in front of you. Kind of the timeline and the word preliminary, I think is really important to highlight here. As we look at the major kind of big ticket items. Obviously, there's much more to this, but green indicates the design phase of the project. That lighter blue or purple is the procurement phase. And then the blue represents the construction phase. And these, these years you see across the top axis there are calendar years, not school years. But as you can tell, there's a significant amount of scaffolding required here to, over the course of four years, get all these projects kind of put under, under one roof. So again, some of this is, we use the word preliminary because depending on the processes in terms of, you know, what is required to get through this, some of these things could be adjusted. So really, in phase one, what's most important to take away in the far left-hand column, what's really happening, be done completed first, is a lot of the safety and security initiatives that were outlined in the Bond project language. This also includes the renovation of the open wing at Schickler, which we talked about quite extensively. They have a number of classrooms that don't have, currently have walls or doors to secure. And that we were, you know, that was made acutely, we were made acutely aware of the problems that create from safety and security purposes. So we highlighted that to begin right away. Demolition and renovation at C F I will be part of the phase one project as well. And, and the work is really beginning in earnest relative to the elementary multipurpose room additions. Okay, so that really encompasses kind of the work that we're beginning right now. But simultaneously to that, you see the design work beginning in phase two of the elementary H vac renovations and then the high school classroom additions. But the construction for those high school classroom additions doesn't come until, until much later in the project. What you can see in, at the end, and this was done very, very purposefully, is the district-wide roof replacement. And much of our asphalt and concrete work will be done towards the tail end of the project. Why? Well, we're always want the roof to be as new as possible when the project is over, so we can extend the life of that. And also, as we're renovating, right, there's going to be work done where, you know, we're, especially if you look at some of the additions, you're connecting existing stuff and that envelope on the end, the green end. As far as asphalt and concrete though, when you're talking about moving large-scale equipment on and off our campuses, there's no sense in paving something where trucks and gravel, trains are going to be dragging over it for two or three or four years. So trying to extend the life of those assets as long as we can. So in terms of the action, how it is, is a PDF file. So safety and security, what does that include, right? So the replacement and upgrading of all of our door locking systems. You know, we have some pretty old systems on some of our classrooms whereby, in order for a teacher to secure the students behind a room, somebody has to actually open the door, go out into the hallway, put the key in to lock the door. Obviously, that creates significant safety risks when we're talking about seconds counting in terms of a response to whether it's an intruder or something, some external threat. So reeking, thirteen hundred locks district-wide and I think almost as many keys. The pile of master keys over the course of a number of additions and renovations. And in terms of documenting all of that work, losing keys and becoming lax in that process is in and of itself a security risk. So kind of wrapping our hands around all of that, really getting a much better feel for who has access to what, right? So you know that one of the upgrades we made recently was providing all of our first responders with badge access. So any door in the district twenty-four seven that has FOB access, our first responders, when they're at duty, can get in, right? So we're trying to limit that downtime of response. This is a way to internally secure our buildings. And there are a number of other things that included safety and security, but this is kind of a big ticket expense. From a building demolition and site work improvement perspective, what you're looking at is a kind of a Google Earth view of the Center for Innovation. The large gray area there, the right side, that is the parking lot, to be your frame of reference. The purple area immediately to the south of that parking lot is where we are recommending additional parking spaces for this, for this campus. In particular, because that is currently overfull parking for a lot of our large-scale events, whether it be an athletic contest, craft show, a major event, we've got people parking on the grass lot. There was some discussion earlier about expanding the north lot, which is on the corner of Oregon and Millville there. But when you're talking about demoing that shaded area that is in yellow, everything in the north of that red line. And the main entrance now maintaining, a majority of our programs are all going to be parking in that south lot. There's really no reason to expand the north lot because we won't be able to use it as an entrance to the building like we used to or we currently do. So you'll, you'll recall that the renovation of C F I includes raising that portion of the building to the north of the red line. The face facade being improved, taking down the awning that currently stands over the bus stop walkway entrance. The maintenance of everything to the south of that red line. So that includes our current programming for our community high school. We have the two athletics gymnasiums that will be maintained. Our district robotics programs are housed in this space as well, as long as the community groups, third degree burns and our local library is going to be using this for some storage and book resale. So the cafeteria, the two gymnasiums and all of the classroom space to the south of that red line will remain upgrades to the new parking lot area. What we plan to do, there will be a lot of green space in that area where the building is demoed. Currently, folks that are coming like from Zimmer or from the apartments, cut across our lawn. They don't go all the way up to the corner of Oregon and Millville and take a left to go, to go to the south. So we're thinking about, we've got a lot of really nice lush foliage there, leaving them, building maybe a diagonal walkway in there, maybe with some trenches, with some really nice green space. But that is already a cut through for a lot of our folks that walk, a lot of our students cut through there. So kind of building that into the campus and making it part of a community walking path is something that we'll take a look at once we have some big open space there. That work is, is in earnest, the design, the construction, the hope for the destruction, rather, to begin sometime on this sun, is the goal. Mark, Daryl, do you, did I miss anything that?
No.
Big tickets, something to talk about? The following slides are renderings of, or the Google Earth view of our elementary additions. So you're looking at Schickler Elementary. The area shaded in red or pink there is the current six classroom space that is referred to as the open wing. Meaning there's one set of double doors that leads you into that wing and no way to ship your kids and staff behind those boxes that are represented as a classroom. So renovating that space, building those walls, putting in the doors, the locks, that's going to happen right away. The purple shaded area there is the proposed location of the new multipurpose room. Right, so you will recall that three of our elementary schools, Lynch, Murphy and Schickler, use a cafeteria slash gymnasium, which is not good. For lack of a better phrase, not good. So we are excited about the multipurpose room additions. Bart Mallow, our partners, French and Associates have done a wonderful job, already meeting with our staff, elementary P E teachers, to talk about some wants and needs that they have in these new facilities. And within reason are incorporating their suggestions into the design phase right now.
Correction, correction. Lynch has got the additional gym already.
Right, Turl, Murphy, Schickler. Did I say Lynch?
You said Lynch.
My fault, sorry. Thank you. This is the existing Murphy overhead shot, so you can see. On the right side of the building there, or to the east, on the east side of the building, would be the proposed location of that multipurpose room. Our principal, Ms. Dowdell, is very excited to learn that the gym will be right behind her office. But there's a hallway separating that off there. That's current vacant space. And then looking at Turl Campus. So you come off Oak Street there, you see those additional parking spaces we put in a few years ago. And you would not be able to see this new addition from behind the building. It's kind of really the only place it can go at Turl. They're landlocked there with, being pretty close to the road to the north. Obviously, to the east is the bus loop and a ton of space between Turl and McCormick Street, right? So that is really a good, good spot, kind of adjacent to the current playground area. There's some other things included in some of these campuses, for example, some fencing in Schickler. We have no fencing around the playground area there and from a security perspective, we're doing some of those additional things.
So when you get to that, Daryl may comment. For those that are trying to look at this and go, well, why isn't this one butted up against the existing building? Well, we've got some engineering limitations that require some setback because there's air intakes for the existing ventilation system at Turl right there on that wall. And so it required a setback originally. I think our original drawings had it abutted and then we had to move it after engineering.
Yeah, the location of the boiler room being so close there, a lot of utilities come into the building from there. So it's less expensive to slide that addition out than it is to relocate all those utilities. So there's some kind of file survey going on, you know, as we speak, that will determine the exact location of those things. So we'll weigh, you know, the cost of those two things, and in terms of the best position for the addition.
Great, and then the final thing we wanted to mention is some energy partnership program that we're engaging in, the company called Guaranteed Energy. And again, looking at finding unique and creative ways to reduce our energy footprint, save some money through grants and energy savings programs that are available. And kudos to Bart Mallow for working with us and partnering with Guaranteed Energy to come up with the best solution for the peer, right? So this will include things like solar panel, insulation on our roofs, control systems that are going to help regulate temperature much better than the current systems do. You don't have to go far in the district, you can go from freezing to sweating in the space of about twenty feet. A lot of that has to do with controls and other things that could be included there. So more information as that, you know, as that part of, part of our project list becomes available. So I'll stop there, there's a lot of information, but that's kind of the initial approach we're taking. The one thing that, that we're, really what isn't open for debate is the timeline. A lot of, it depends on so many variables that have to line up and be perfect. But what is up for debate is some of the specifics in the design of particular components. For example, when we get to the high school piece, let's go back to the timeline. You look at high school classroom additions, auditorium renovations, high school and middle school renovations, those are, those are significant, right? It's a line item here on the chart, but those are significant. That's going to require, for example, our auditorium, our, our drama, our music, you know, band teacher, choir staff, those folks are going to have to have input in terms of what they want to see out of the facility, right? That's the whole point, is the design for the staff and students. And Mark and I have had this conversation a lot, like, you know, we don't have a horse in the race, right? We have a budget, we have, you know, we have some parameters to work within, but, you know, we encourage Bart Mallow and French, both from a design and construction perspective, to really include our staff. And they've already done, started doing that work, so we're fully confident that we're going to do that, so. All right, I'll stop there and see what questions you might have.
How much of the projected money that we had said, okay, forty-six million?
How much of the projected money that we had said, okay, 46 million or whatever it was, how much is, are we not going to get as much bang for our buck because of inflation?
Still don't know.
Still don't know.
So on the agenda tonight is a resolution to authorize the moving forward of the sale of the bonds.
Okay.
That takes about 60 days, so that won't happen until late spring here, almost June, because there's perspectives and there's marketing and there's negotiated sales. It depends where the interest rates are in the market. We do know that it's because most of the work you get done, this illegal technical issue with bonds, that 85% of the construction's got to occur in three years. If it doesn't, then you run into negative arbitrage. Basically, you pay a penalty, okay? We could still run into negative arbitrage if we earn more interest than what we have to pay on the bonds to the bondholders, the investors, until they're mature. But that's another thing that Treasury manages. So you go out, you sell them, there's N B estimates, an interest rate. Hopefully, we'll have interest income that exceeds. So hopefully, by the time we're done, we'll have more than 44 million to work with. But the big question is, Daryl can't answer it, but I'll call him in a second. We're in 2023. I can speak personally. I've postponed building, finishing my deck on my house for over three years because I refused to pay the inflated 10 times the price for decking material that happened after COVID hit. And so we're seeing all kinds of inflated costs. There's still supply chain issues going on. There's lots of things. When we get to steel, and there are more experts at it than I am, that there's so many variables today, but we can't predict on March 1st where we're going to be. We hope, with estimates that were done originally by Bart and Mallow, with PFM and the Fences, by the time we're done, we're going to be able to complete everything on that project. But that's why Matt said this is draft and preliminary. And as we go through, things will change. And we just had a meeting, it was a Monday, Daryl, or Tuesday this week, on the technical side of all the accounting and the reporting, where, you know, the original budget change orders. If we run into a budget item where a bid comes in higher than what we projected, then we're going to have to decide where does that additional funding come from? Do we have to lessen something else in the project scheme from priority? And that goes on in the life of a bond, no matter what's going on, because you run into unforeseeable things all the time. We're hopeful, the time we're done, we out there in '26, we'll be able to report. We did, hopefully, 100%, or at least close to 99% of what we intended to do with the funding that was out there. The time will tell. What's going to happen?
Just keep that crystal ball up.
Yep.
Is there any room to move the asphalt concrete paving if you need to? Because, you know, it is contingent and definitely affected by gas prices and the oil. And so if you get the, I understand the process, I understand why you would wait. But if you get the elementary zone, could you do something?
We've actually talked about that, like, for example, at Schicker Drive.
Right. It's just so bad.
It's so bad, right? And then maybe partially doing some of the bus garage stuff before the very end. We've had that exact discussion, so.
Well, this seems like gas prices are eventually probably increasing again. So oil is a huge driver on asphalt.
Yep.
Yeah, we've even batted around and said, just like, okay, what if we did X amount of the project in phase one, X amount in phase two, X amount, perfect world, you're right, leave it all at the end. But I'm telling you, Schicker Drive, I don't know how much longer that can survive. And it's, it's real. It is. And we're at the point now, one of the things, the biggest issue we have is just the curves, right? So what happens is when you go to pass and the bus does, breaking down the edge of that, and that's creeping into the center, you can only patch it so much.
It should actually off to all the ice.
All the ice. It's going to, oh yeah, spring's going to be, it's going to be weird. It's going to be weird. So again, you look at, you know, where you go, right? Because you know you're into marshland, kind of one end of it, and then it's got a big drop off into the field on the right side with the culvert there. You know, it's built where you go. So we're trying to figure out, it's too narrow, curved both sides, because then you couldn't even have two buses passing one another. So the curving is what would really help curb some of the break now, right? So it's.
And Murphy, isn't the drawing, the building here, I'm still trying to.
Yes, the bottom of the drawing.
The bottom of the drawing is still.
The south.
Because that was like way in the back.
Yeah, possibly.
I didn't think, yeah, okay.
That's the south part of the bottom.
It's just, it's cut off a little bit, is what you're saying.
It is, because all you see is the entrance, or you're going to see the bus school area, right?
Yeah, so I was just, I was trying to, I was pretty sure that was the entrance, so I figured that was why it was there, but yeah.
I'm curious about that placement of the new auditorium as well, because there's other squares. Is it because of the boilers? Is it because of?
There's lots of it, but it's also when it's used. You put that in the back, at the top, you put in the back of the building. Now you got to open the whole building up to get to the gymnasium where it's isolated up in the front corner. You park in a parking lot, like Lisa said, you can't see.
I had the same question, I was like, why is that?
And we started.
Why did they? Playground's a part of it too.
Yeah, playground's part of it. There's quite extensive playground equipment that's just to the upper left that would be costly for him to move. You're talking, there's about a quarter million dollars.
Especially if it's easier to deliver there, like if you have stuff to deliver, you know, drop off. I was going through my head.
Yeah.
Just know how close it is to that adjacent property and.
We actually, where that tree line is, is not the property line. We own into those trees, probably, if you see where that, where Matt's got the hand, the white hand up there? Up right there and that point there, but just a little bit left. We own quite a bit of ways into those woods is the property line. You can see the state out on Pratt Road where the property line is.
Thanks. So I know the buses wasn't something that we made to construct, but where does the timing of purchasing buses fall in this preliminary timeline?
It's already begun. So that's not reflective in here because that's something that, it's in the bond, we'll use the proceeds. But that's something, as Bart and Mallow refers, that's an owner. Where the owner's going to be controlling all that. We don't need them to bid it, we normally bid it. I was actually reviewing the bid documents earlier today to get them posted here next week. We'll have them out, they'll be coming to the April board meeting for award for the 2324 school year. Plan same as what was done before, purchase four. We've got a million, a little over a million, something in the way of bond dollars. It should give us about 10 buses, maybe more. But what we're finding like this year, if you remember bus purchases last year, they were running about 60. They've gone up about 10 grand back to April's kind of point in a year. And so we're seeing a little bit of inflationary. So over time, plan is 10, we may only get to nine after four years. But we'll try to buy as much as we can with the proceeds.
And I know my next question, you're already hitting me. I'm sure Matt came up.
You're looking at him.
I guess, like, in your preliminary here, where do you see, because I know this is everyone's like hottest option, I ask, get asked, and it's probably every day. Where do we see then the ninth graders getting to start being in the high school?
Not that age.
Okay.
Not that age. So it's a $25 million question. So we're looking at '25, '26, that school year. That's where the grade level reconfiguration will go into effect. So the ninth graders will all come to the high school. The elementary will be converted to K4s, current will be to a 5-6, and Zever 2 is a 7.
Again, you said fall, who you said?
'25, '26 school year.
Oh, so fall of '25.
Yes. So it's fun, it's interesting because if you look at this, fall of '25 is far right.
I can have a look at this three times.
Yeah, so, yeah, the school year will be '25, '26.
But that would be everything coming in the line.
Well, the reason why we didn't put the high school stuff in '24 is because it's such a condensed timeline. We're very confident that given, because if you look at, so like, high school classroom addition, the design phase begins spring of '23, that's right now, right? So that work to get that done.
So it starts on the way to fall, right?
Yeah.
Will slowly be dropped in?
So we'll, I mean, we'll be working August.
We'll be open in August, so '25.
Yep.
Well, I see this KJ buffer, that's why I think you added in there.
We, what we did, you know, we, our first meeting was, we saw their preliminary timeline. We said, okay, what if we put all the high school stuff in '24? What if we put the elementary stuff in '25? And we started looking backwards mapping it. And maybe Daryl can explain it better than me in terms of the design, procurement, construction stuff. And we, we had a very limited window with so much work to do. So you talk about complete renovation of the auditorium, classroom additions. We're talking about building permanent walls in, it's two of our wing classes that have their local bathroom renovations, locker room renovations, multipurpose room addition at high school, way too many projects. And in that timeline, if we put it in '24, one thing goes wrong, to your point, we're in trouble. And especially if we're hinging, moving over the grade levels on that construction timeline. The reason we pushed it another year was because I can't get a call in August or July that says, we're not going to be done and you can't move all of these grades. Staffing is contingent on that, and there's so many things that. So now from a staffing perspective, you know, next year of '23, '24, the following year of '24, '25, we have two full school years to deal with staffing, to look at teacher certification, to look at building mock schedules. We have a 5-6 program that we're creating. We've never had a 5-6 in a median school year before. And we did a lot of that heavy lifting in 2019 when we began to investigate other districts that had that, and we were considering it. So we're going to blow the dust off those binders, get those committees back together, go do some site business and build that 5-6 program. I didn't feel comfortable having only eight years to do that work, now we have two. And again, we want the high school sooner or later too. We wanted it, that's the flagship building, that's the linchpin of this whole plan. Because once you move the eighth graders, it's domino effect downward. But just to be quite honest, the window of time and given the fact that if one thing went wrong, the whole thing falls apart, it's not really a good option for us.
So the ready search, we had the postponing openings a lot.
A lot, yeah.
Or get them out early.
Now, logistically, full disclosure, the Schicker renovation, and I've already had conversations with, you know, leadership of the building and talked about, we may be doing some construction as school starts next year. But the nice part is, we can just shift kids and move one classroom at a time. We'll build a wall and a door and we'll be okay, we're not doing any major demo there. So logistically, we hope, I mean, to be done, right? By third day of school, that's our goal, but there may be some carryover. The other nice part about where we placed that elementary multipurpose room additions is that all of those things are being added on the exterior of existing buildings. And that work can be done all year round, right? Within reason, we can't have jackhammers out there during school hours, but you get the point, we're not going to shut the whole building down actually.
Right.
Well, I have questions. Ready, exciting time.
Let's start taking dirt. We're silver. I heard that.
Sorry, missed the side door, sorry.
Long time.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it. All of our work, looking forward to that. Okay, I think that concludes.
Good work to have.
It is good work. I'm excited that we can do it. Okay, that concludes our presentations for tonight. We will go into our action items. So we have our consent grouping, has quite a few items in it this evening. Approval minutes of February 1st, 2023, rock and bathing. Overnight trip request, Key Club to Big City, Michigan on May 3rd through 8th of 2023. Decker Club to Detroit, Michigan on March 9th through 10th, 2023. H O S A Club to Traverse City, Michigan on April 26th through 29th of 2023. Then we have first reading of board policy 5350, student welfare. And then we have second reading and adoption of board policy, removal of policy 80 number 02, emergency operations plan, policy 8420, emergency situation at school. And then lastly, policy 8321, criminal justice information. So are there any consent grouping items anybody wishes to be removed from the survey? Okay, I'm carrying on. Can I go ahead and get a motion?
I make a motion that the reading of the minutes and policies be waived and the consent agenda items be approved as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Lebar?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Luka?
Aye.
Ms. Hopeur?
Aye.
Dr. Nope?
Aye.
Ms. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, then we have resolution of bond sales.
My motion for the agreement, the resolution on the addition of the 2023 sale of bonds in the amount that exceeds 44 million, 140,000. Oh my gosh, yeah. Did you say that?
44 million.
44 million, 140,000, right? And then millions back there, that's a turn me on, okay. I'm like, I thought it was a bit of yours.
Support.
Okay. I have a motion and a support any discussion on this motion. Okay, I'm hearing done. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Lebar?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Luka?
Aye.
Ms. Hopeur?
Aye.
Dr. Nope?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, next, closed session. And actually, Matt, we're supposed to ask you if you would like to go in closed session to review evaluation?
Yes, please.
So can I get a motion?
I make a motion that the board move to closed session to discuss the superintendent evaluation.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a support any discussion on that? Here we're done. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. Lebar?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Luka?
Aye.
Ms. Hopeur?
Aye.
Dr. Nope?
Aye.
Putnam says aye. Motion carries.
Meat makes that food fill up and takes it from slight to great, makes you full and fast. Stay full.
I always tell you, drink water when you're eating.
It's the exact opposite.
I think she forgot her papers.
You can't tell by, like, you need to see, but...
Import paper.
I know, but I don't need this.
Okay, everybody ready? I don't even know what time it is. 10:59 and we're back in open session. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is in our action items still to approval of the superintendent evaluation. Before we go ahead and do that, I'm going to go ahead and read the superintendent evaluation summary. So, we'll start with the categories. Governance and board relations is a 3.2. Community relations, 3.5. Staff relations, 3.6. Business and finance, 3.4. Instructional leadership, 3.6. Overall professional practice is a 3.5. In the areas of student growth, the rating is a 3. And in the area of progress towards district-wide goals is a 4. So the overall final rating is a 3.3 and the overall final label is effective. So that is the summary of the superintendent evaluation.
I'd like to have that down?
Yes, I would love a motion.
I'd like to move that the board has got the final resolution of the superintendent's year-end evaluation.
Support. Okay, I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, hearing none. Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Lepka?
Aye.
Ms. Hofer?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our action items on the agenda. Let's open it up to any board member communications for this meeting.
I think we should say thank you to Trill. We didn't get a chance, but I think the presentation was very good. Like I said, I think it was pretty awesome. I always like to hear Kylie talk. Yeah, she's very good. They did a great job and like I said, I love this tip. I want to say that I wrote the district newsletter today and I want to give kudos. I know it takes a lot, but Jared did a great job. It was very visual. It's just cool to read and so I just wanted to give him a shout out. I don't think we do enough to say thank you for that because that just really, really awesome.
Okay, any other topics?
I'm going to throw out Leader Fund cornhole, March 11th. It's here next week. Find people, get them signing up on our website. Let's get it built up again. We haven't been able to do it for a couple of years and we want to get back to it. So let's get that thing rolling again. Our project is going well with the schools. We're happy with that, so...
Dr. Watson, did you want to clarify that Quanl is in place here?
It's almost here.
No, it's going to be at the Center Building on November 11th. And it's registered before noon, hopefully play in noon and go from there. So like similar years. I was hoping you would clarify anything I should go, so...
She's listening to me, yes.
Perfect. All right, next week.
I do, again, quick, want to just thank Trill. I really do, favorite part is the name for the presentations. The other two quick things I want to mention is I am very honored, again, once again this year, Schickler Elementary had me come for their spelling bee. I absolutely love that. It's emotionally hard, but the kids, they try so hard and I love watching them. And then I just want to mention, because I know how much work and effort, but I tell you, the play was fabulous. They really outdone themselves this year. I am so excited for the next play. I don't even know what it is. I'm excited to watch it. They've done such a great job, all everybody's efforts. And then the last thing I want to say is that I just appreciate every one of my board members here at the table. I know sometimes it's not fun and hard and sometimes it's really hard, but each and every one of you are of value and I appreciate you and I just want to thank them all that. So I will turn it over to Superintendent Martin.
Thank you. Two quick things. I too wanted to mention the newsletter and the hard work that goes into it. We're getting a lot of feedback from our staff on the information that provides and highlighting members. And also the LESP, just wanted to highlight their leadership, their unit leadership for coming here every month and trying to recognize their members. It takes a lot, they got to get nominations, they put it together. They come here at all times to recognize new employees and I think it's great. So I'm just glad that you could see it coming. So just wanted to say thank you and that between the other two now.
Okay, thank you Superintendent Martin.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. LeBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Lepka?
Aye.
Ms. Hofer?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?